Basically called small talk at the beginning where I usually pick something off the resume that's innocuous just to get the candidate used to hearing their own voice because they talk a lot during this interview. And that might be a good place to bring it up as well.
Yeah.
What's what's prompted your interest in this?
Why you addressing the show?
I think we're gonna get to that before we even get to the verbal part of it.
Yeah.
And I think that's the strong entry level, entry letter that people write is their motivation as to why they're applying.
Can I, I'm gonna ask a question on ignorance, uh, only because I, I think based upon the sample size of the applicants that we have and their location, I think this is any, you know, should be some, in my opinion, at least. Part of the major criteria is how familiar are they, are they with the climate of New Hampshire? Because people that may move here, if they've ever been to New Hampshire, they haven't, especially, you know, central New Hampshire and northern, they'd be miserable after six months once they encounter.
Yeah.
So that, you know, that needs to be something in my opinion that.
What the hell is all shit?
Yeah, exactly. You know, people from.
Yeah, now we hang your fish.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It does snow in Arkansas.
It does, but it doesn't get as cold.
Maybe we get a little bit more.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that format of interviewing. I think, I think it's a fine, all of us are in the room, uh, you know. Creating a little bit of anxiety is, is a good thing.
Drink through a pressure and cheese.
Uh, all the interviews that I've ever done for, uh, being a police officer was a, was a, a high stress group. Interview and you're the only chair sitting in the middle of the room. I understand this isn't like that, but I, I think that's. A good way still gives us an opportunity to chime in if you pick anything that's of interest during that interview. Um, you know, there's some good questions in here that Steve provided. I think there's a lot of questions that. Are listening the same kind of answer or response. I think there's a lot of repetitive type.
I think the, I think the flow naturally goes from one to another where you don't have to stop. I think the right candidate is gonna know what. How they need to answer the questions to get the job.
Mm hmm.
You know, I think we're gonna get someone, especially in a management position like this, who's been through interviews, who's been through these processes. Who knows what, how they have to sell themselves.
Right.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, conducted the interviews themselves even.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, and, and I think the key is to break down, is to try to break through those types of answers that. They think they want us to hear and really get down into. Uh, having to make them think.
Yeah.
And, and usually when they're not prepared for those, those. Sell question, the selling answers.
Exactly.
Uh, that's when you really get to see who that person really is.
Yeah, and let me give you an example of that. One of the things that I will do along the line as we're talking about work experiences, we'll talk about accomplishments, we'll talk about. Um, ratings that they received on the performance appraisals. What they were complimented on, what they were told they needed to improve. We'll do that all through the discussion on work experience. Okay? So when you get to the end, every candidate I know is prepared to talk about, about their strengths and their weaknesses. Okay, so strengths, you spend time letting them go away and all that kind of thing. You get to weaknesses and what you find out is almost everybody says, well, I need more education. Mm hmm. To which my response is, that's something I think we could all use. Um, what other kinds of things? And I probe them and then I will send them back to their performance appraisals. What it was they said they needed to improve on. How are you doing on that, et cetera? Okay, so it's really important. As Dave says, to be able to break through professional preparation to what this individual is more likely to do in the future, based on what they've done in the past. Yeah.
So, um, we also have the power to be proactive and I, I think the board would be quite happy. Uh, if you, any of you had a particular person in mind that you wanted to recruit into this process. To consider that as well, not just wait for a resume to come in. Uh, showing interest, but if you think there's somebody out there, somebody's out there. Uh, based on your experience and your years here in Waterville Valley, that's something you can do as well.
I think that, um. You know, I think our preference, at least my preference would be to get. Number one, if you could, somebody from New Hampshire that's familiar with New Hampshire laws, New Hampshire. Government, all of that, New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, all of those things. Um, and as you move further away to Arkansas or North Carolina. I think there'd have to be an outstanding candidate to bring in somebody from someplace like that. So I think. You know, the, the proximity, especially in New Hampshire would be the most favorable. Maine, maybe Maine, Vermont, you know, other New England states might be second and then. And then it just, it's a, it's a stretch, I think, to go too far beyond that unless it's somebody that's just really, is really outstanding.
So town meeting law is basically only in the Northeast. So if you go out to Iowa, for instance, they have whole other ways of governing. So it's a lot different.
Let's not get any clearer.
Well, we need.
Well, you are looking.
In my mind, people that are familiar with at least that sort of.
Yeah.
Um, law, because having a, a once a year town meeting to determine. You know, your budgets and all of these other issues is, that's a difference that is not observed in many other parts of the nation.
Well, prima, prima facie, a, a strong candidate should be someone who's a town administrator or town manager in New Hampshire.
Exactly.
Yes, that would be, yeah.
Who is very strong physically, meaning financially and physical was we're gonna have to start really managing our money.
Mm hmm.
And, uh. Yeah, that, that's gonna be real important on my list of pass throughs.
And speaking of money, um, there is one wrinkle to all of this, and that is the tax collector position. You may have noticed that we did not list that in the, uh, announcement. Um, there's an issue with that. Um, the town voted back in twenty, when was it? Do you remember Steve? Ninety-eight to, and it required a town vote, town meeting vote to. Uh, give the town manager the power to be the, the tax collector. And right now we're in the process of, uh, potentially changing that. Uh, we're in a bit of a pickle, uh, given state law. Maybe Steve, you can explain a little bit just to give the folks here a sense of the. Tax collector and the options we have.
Yeah, so by default, as assistant town manager and interim, uh, interim town manager, the responsibilities would fall to me. So what I'm asking the board for, um, after this session concludes is just an appointment for me to take that responsibility underneath my title. Um, and then in short order, um.
They're gonna pass the buck.
Our deputy tax collector as the acting tax collector. Until the town decides to have either a special town meeting to potentially take that tax collector duty off of the town manager's position. Or we could also, to my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but do that at town meeting in, in twenty-six.
And.
We can wait till then.
Lot more complications with maybe till March.
Okay.
Cause then we'd have to have another audit. Where if we did it before January first, we don't have to have another audit. It's gonna have our year end audit.
Yeah.
Which will be perfect as far as supplementing what we normally need for the RSA.
Yeah.
And we'd have clean books to pass on to the tax collector on January first, which would start this for you.
Our, our concern was by adding tax collector duties to the. Announcement. Announcement. It, it would be, it would really limit, cause I don't think it's very common at all.
Yeah, Mark said that there were only like two or three of, of town managers.
Take them up because they don't have any experience as a tax collector.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, that's why we left it off. And then does the town wanna rethink that whole thing? Or are we gonna keep it with the town manager? And therefore that person will have to go through all the training for that and pick up that, um, position or Kristin? Go ahead.
So I have talked to the NHMA, which is the New Hampshire Municipal Association, the DRA, the Department of Revenue. Um, and our, our town council to ask the best scenario for the way that the town has set the tax collector duties up right now. And how to change those because even while Mark was here, we had already talked about separating those duties because they were disseminated in so many ways, which they really shouldn't. They weren't up to code as far as how they, the DRA wants to see those duties performed. Uh, with the new RSAs that have been on the books and the ones that were older. So he had already said that he was gonna do that this next year after March. He was gonna start to take those tax collector duties away from the manager position and actually. Have just a tax collector plus a deputy. Every tax collector has to have a deputy and that was his deputy. And now that Steve is the interim town manager. And he's appointed as the town manager, he would be, the tax collector would fall on him right now, which then he could appoint me as his deputy because after. Thirty days after, um, Mark not being taxed, I can only carry those duties for thirty days without another tax collector deputizing me. So that's what's happening with those two letters, just so that it's legal. And then we were talking to the DRA and the town council. And, um, the NHMA legally saying to clarify the tax collector position, which would be easy. Would be to take the duties because it was done at, um, town meeting by ballot and it was an amen, a warrant. Um, that we could have a special election just for that one purpose of removing the tax collector duties from the town manager. Making a tax collector position. And making it an appointed position, so it doesn't have to be elected because our pool in Waterville is very small. Um, and then basically we could do that in one fell swoop and they would be by ballot. So special election ballot, that's it, it's done. And once it's on the books at any time, the select board. Or at any town meeting could decide to have another special town election if they wanna change it. Or every, it would be a position, woman, it'd be a position that would be for two years. Um, and then every two years it would come up on the ballot. Do you still wanna continue to have the tax collector as an appointed position? And they could change that anytime with a new warrant. If they decide they'd like to do something else and have it elected again. Dan.
So just a question. If we. If you will, follow what you're saying there and we appoint a tax collector. That's the select board. That tax collector has to have certain training and skills, et cetera.
Yeah.
Um, if we do not have someone in town with those skills, if you will. How long do they have to obtain that appropriate training and skills and all of that?
It, it's a three-year certification process.
Okay.
You do have somebody, that would be me, cause I'm already.
Well, you're already the deputy. Yes, I mean.
But she could be appointed.
A tax collector without having all that certification, but you have to be in the process of going through that certification. To become the tax collector.
Tax collector.
Yes, so I have one year now certified, I have two more to go. Um, and I'm in that process and I already am doing all those duties as a tax collector because I was his deputy, so. That wouldn't be a problem for the town of Waterville because they could just retain me. As the tax collector instead of the deputy. And then I would have a deputy in case any duties or something happened to me, it would be able to. Take over my role. It doesn't have to be an appointed, I mean, it could be an appointed person that isn't like here in town or. Um, in the building, just that they would be able to be sufficient skill to take over my duties.
So I, 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 yeah.
Does, does the deputy also have to be certified?
Um, the deputy would have to take some classes, yes, but not the same qualifications for the tax collector, but. Yes, they would go to continuing education classes.
So anyway, it, for the purposes of, for your purposes, the search committee. Um, we did not mention tax collector. We're gonna have to go through all this process. I mean, I think you see where we're leaning towards is, uh, is. Doing it in the way that Kristen was talking about and just getting it off the town manager. Uh, but we'll have, we, we will have to follow through with that, uh, as you're going through with, with your process. Uh, the other practical issue is what do you have? Uh, what can we give you in terms of responses with regard to, I think, Mike already touched upon this, uh. Uh, housing relocation expense salary. Right? People are gonna ask those, those questions at some point. So what do you need to know from us right now? I mean, we can give you, you know, Mark was at about roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And with the benefit package that, that all other town employees have, we're gonna be looking at that benefit package again. This budget season, we find after COVID. This budget season, we find after COVID, we're, we're looking at the benefit package and salary structure every year now in the budget process, because of. The labor shortage, so I guess we need to figure out what's going to be. Uh, what'll be good numbers, good approaches.
Well, I, I would suggest that you go look at whatever information we have about what other town.
We have.
Okay.
We do have that, yeah.
And I would also suggest that normally the chief executive has a different vacation package than what is included in the. In the regular, and, and it's part of a contract, you know, but it's usually something different than. You get two weeks after a year.
It's also, what's it gonna cost to attract someone who is in a position, who's built up six to eight years' experiences, what we're probably looking for? To leave six or eight years of benefits and the rest of the stuff to come here. And you can't start them at day one, but you can't start them at the top of the scale either.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know.
Yeah, no, this is, this is an issue.
You know, you list competitive salary and ask salary requirements. I think. Anyone who would be looking at this would, would understand. Uh, that the salary would be there, and you might have someone who we can't pay enough to get.
Right. We had.
Kind of that gets to the question of why, why you applying for this job.
Yeah.
If, if somebody's applying for the job because of lifestyle, they wanna get out of Man- Manchester, and they wanna come up to a smaller town. That's one thing, if somebody's looking, obviously looking for a pay advance. That's a, that's a different issue, and so, so hopefully some of that comes out of the discussion as to why somebody wants to come here.
I think the salary issue is important, because we may end up needing to, if you will, pay more. Just to be able to allow somebody to actually.
Understand all that.
Live up here, because the costs are high.
Well, the costs are higher at a lot of other places, a lot higher than this, but you know, it gets. Okay, you're rolling your eyes, but.
No, yes.
If someone who, who would conceive, conceivably would be at a town administrator level. Would be at a salary thing where they're in a comfortable environment where they are. I think you're right, we might have to go higher because of someone relocating and someone who has a mortgage at two percent. Having to buy a house up here at seven percent.
Yeah, that's.
You know, that, that's, that's kind of what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the whole package.
But also, hopefully we're finding that person, that money isn't the total motivator, the lifestyle part is it. Because if it's money, and they're here, and another job comes up down the road that pays more money, we don't have that person, we, we need someone. Who's gonna fit in culturally with our community. And the, I think a bunch of the people who've come up here to work here have come here to work because of the environment they work in and the environment they live in. So I think that's, hopefully the candidate we have will want that. And be willing to look at the big picture of that, to maybe get their kids into a smaller school.
Right.
To maybe, you know, get things that are here to offer.
We had, uh, we had dipped our toe into the salary of town managers. Uh, Mark had, uh. Uh, created a list of other town managers and town administrators' salaries, I think that'd be handy to, to pass out. To all the folks on, get an idea, that was just a few months ago, so it's probably relatively, uh, relatively current. That would probably be helpful for them to have. Do we, did, uh, we should probably also give the committee. Uh, a copy of Mark's last contract to see what the terms were. We just recently, I think it was last year, or I think Bob, you were here, right? Uh, I think it was when the, the last year on the board, we re. Renegotiated, uh, Mark's contract, that probably helpful to you guys. As well, I'm just thinking, what tools can we give you guys?
Remember, we've got a guy with twenty-four years in the town.
That's right.
Coming up, so.
Right.
But it took, it took a while for us to get his salary competitive. In the, in the last few years.
That's right.
I know, when I was on, we were really concerned about how much below he was, and he got several years of, of good increases. I was actually happy to see we had gotten him up to a hundred and twenty-five versus what was going on four years ago when I was on.
Yeah, I mean, I was concerned, cause Captain was hiring a town administrator off the street at a hundred and twenty-five, that's what they were advertising.
And the town is far less complicated.
Yeah, but that's the environment.
Yeah.
How do we compete with that?
You know, we went through this when we reestablished everything, that we had a problem bringing in public safety officers.
Yeah.
And paying them the same thing people who were here ten years were getting. So we have to be aware of that.
Yeah, the whole salary benefits package is a moving target, and it's moving again this year in our budget process.
Yeah.
As, as you guys, you guys well know, haven't gone through it.
Hopefully we'll.
It hasn't changed.
Burnt out in like Keene or Manchester.
Yeah.
Who wants?
Well, we, well, we were, on that, we, we were concerned that, you know, we didn't want someone who saw this as a retirement in place. We thought of, we need someone who's, cause we got, that's why we listed some of the major projects and we have coming our way. Uh, and like you were saying, Mike, we really need someone who's at the top of his or her game.
Yeah.
Uh, and fits in here, cause some big deals coming up.
Yeah.
And not just the wastewater treatment facility, but a lot of other things.
Oh, no, I know that, once that's, that's why the job is longer than that, it's not a ten-year job.
Right.
You know, once we get through wastewater, we've got all kinds of other stuff, so hopefully someone wants to be challenged.
Right.
Who wants to get up and hit the ground running with all these things coming at them.
Now, we're also, we're also, uh, going to hire, we, we haven't decided exactly how, who yet, obviously, but. We're gonna hire a project manager for that wastewater treatment facility. Uh, so that's something else I think should be in the back of your mind, people ask about, uh, you know, some of these, uh. Some of these projects, that's a big one, and I think Mark was juggling both and, and at times it was an issue. Uh, trying to keep up with town operations while all the work he was putting into with, with Dylan and. And, uh, on that, uh, project, so that's gonna require a project manager, and that's gonna require someone who can work with.
Yeah.
Someone who was running a, a, a project, uh, or at least, uh, managing a project that's gonna be. Here I say it upwards of a hundred million dollars.
To that point, if I may.
You may.
I think that in it of itself is going to, to put us into a category of selecting somebody. That has some relevant experience of managing a project of, of that magnitude.
Yeah.
Um, because i- if you don't, I mean, again, not saying someone's not capable of doing it by any stretch, um, but. Maybe it's not a, you know, albeit the, and I'll be all, but if, if they had, then that is a huge. Because, uh, you know, Mark had twenty-four years of experience, but even for someone that had that much experience, this was a huge undertaking. For someone that was that experienced, never mind someone that's relatively new to municipal government and trying to take on something, again, this, of this size, so. Yeah. It's, uh. I think that the pay structure is, is gonna be a component to attract somebody to wanna take on, that, you know, that, that headache, if you will.
Or are you gonna work as a town manager who's gonna be under your pay structure of your project manager? It says you're probably gonna need to pay more for that, and see, my, I had a completely different take on this, which I won't get into. But I think you have to have that project manager. To work with some guardrails in place, but to work and not be disturbed. You know, bear, bear managing, it's like, who do you want to spend the most time? The person managing seven million or a hundred million?
Right.
You want that person managing a hundred million to put his nose, his or her nose to the grindstone. And do the best they can, undisturbed with that.
Yes, no, I think that's, I, I, I haven't agreed with that. And that's, I think, why we're moving forward with the hiring a project manager.
Right.
Right, but there has to be obviously some.
Or you could work the other way around, you could hire a project manager and change the description of the town. Administrator, town managing.
Potentialist, yeah.
It's just a lot of things, but I think we really, you know, we're, we're, we're in a really dynamic place right now.
Sure.
Or what we do is gonna influence generations.
Yeah. And we may even be around to see that, the influence. Can you guys think of anything else, uh, we, we need from us? Uh, I just wanna turn you guys loose.
Next meeting, Steve will get us resumes.
And I think that will be, um, as soon as we know the period for applying is over, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gone from the eleventh to the twenty-second, but of course I'm reachable by phone.
Yeah, yeah, but, but you could still get resumes by email and reply, yes, no, maybe.
Do you anticipate? Anybody, a remote, uh. Re- remote job, questions on this?
Oh, probably, right?
Yeah.
Everyone wants to do this remotely?
I would take it off the table.
I'd say you'd have to learn what's going on here, before you can, you know, do it on.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree, but it's a.
But there's also like the flexibility with family, you know.
There's your ways to get at it.
These things to do, but you know, they have a kid who has a doctor's appointment a day, but they can get things done.
Yeah, there's a difference between, I'm, I'm not gonna be here Thursday afternoon for something, as opposed to.
A regular remote day. Right, no, that's probably wouldn't work here, but I, I just wanna take it off the table, there may be some. Way you can look at it. Wendy, you've been very quiet here, she likes to sit back and let us all expose ourselves and then come in with the dagger. So, and, so please.
Well, if you, now, um, no, I think everything's been covered, I'm really excited that you're all taking the time to do this, it's awesome.
I'm gonna drive through Arkansas in a week.
You wanna hand out jobs?
You know, lunch, you're all in the town with somebody, okay?
Yeah. Stop in a diner and hand out some applications.
They're all named Joe.
They're all named Joe.
Joe, one, two, and three.
So you guys wanna set up the time for another meeting among yourselves, or do you wanna just do it here while you're together?
Yeah, well, let's wait a week or so.
And then you figure it out.
And we'll figure it out.
Any guys have any other, any other questions? We look forward to having some names passed our way at the end of this process, we hope.
Send us everything as they come in.
Yeah, we'll figure out a pattern.
Yeah, then you guys do the yes, no, and maybe routine.
And I may, I may need new Steve to set up our meetings. So that we make sure that we get them posted correctly and.
Yeah, that'll be one of Steve's many duties on this.
Happy to help.
On, on this project.
We can accomplish something good for the community.
Yes, and if you think at any time you need to bring us into a conversation about anything, process or whatever. Money, I mean, if you find me, we need to be more definitive.
Oh, yeah.
We'll get together.
It, it will all be as collaborative as this town is always collaborative. You know what I mean? We're not operating in a vacuum of fixing.
Great.
Great, thank you.
All right, well, thank you, we have a couple other pieces of business, um, to go through, and good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, please find that unicorn for us. They're out there, right?
They are.
Well, that'll be a tougher one, I, I'll settle with just the unicorn of any color.
Did you want me to say for this?
Um, yeah, we, what time do you have to leave by?
Um, soon.
Soon.
Stephen and I have a meeting at eleven as well.
Okay, I, I just wanted to do something really quick, is that all you had, Steve, was for us to sign?
Yes, please, those two documents.
To sign those two documents, okay, we can do that, uh. Before we leave, I, um, I think we'll probably wanna talk to this in more detail on the, oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Um, on, on the eighth, but, uh, I think I, I pose to you guys that a dilemma, a decision we'll be facing soon. On a request to, how much was the, uh, how much was the, uh, septage?
Twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand gallons.
So put that in simplistic terms, so that I understand.
It's a lot.
How much that is relative to our capacity, if we had a billion gallon capacity, twenty-eight thousand's nothing. If we have thirty thousand capacity, twenty-eight thousand's one heck of a lot.
Like, in terms of putting it, like quantifying it, outside of the resort, we don't take hardly any septage from anybody, including town residents. Uh, and the reason for that is septage is roughly a hundred to a thousand times stronger than municipal wastewater. So it is a whole other ballgame, uh, that we're dealing with, it's not like we're just simply taking. You know, their, their wastewater that's entering their septic tank, and now we're taking the concentrate that's left behind, cause we, keep in mind, we take their leachate.
Right.
So everything that makes it through the septic system, that's, that would be, is coming down to us, just a liquid. It is, the reason why this is an issue now is because DES, as you, let me rewind a little bit, you got, you three remember. Um, we had an issue with our wet test in quarter one, and, and leading into quarter two, luckily we, we passed it on our second. Uh, we passed it on our second retest, um, but that was caused by the amount of sludge that's existing in the lagoons. Now, septage, you know, it's, it's just, think of it in the, in the sake of matter, right? You can't get, you can't destroy matter, but when you have septage, you're going to infinitely increase, not infinitely, but. If you did, if we didn't add that, to just put it that way, you're going to increase infinitely more, the amount of bugs. Microorganisms, if you will, that are in the lagoons.
Yeah.
Then if you didn't.
Right.
Right, all it is, is a, is a source of carbon for them to, to, uh, multiply.
Yeah.
Um, so what I'm getting at is, we're in a situation now where the lagoons are full of sludge. And if we take more septage. And we have a series of non-compliances, and the state asks us, after they pointed out to us that you shouldn't be taking this, and we tell them. Well, we took twenty-eight thousand gallons of septage. We're not gonna have an ally to defend us when we have to report a non-compliance, we're gonna have someone that says, we, we advise them to not take this.
Yeah.
They didn't listen to us, and now we, now they have a, you know, a, a, a series of non-compliances because of that decision.
What is your recommendation?
My recommendation is that, um, a- as it had been for a couple of years, to be honest with you, that we shouldn't be taking. We, we should be, we should have been discussing with the resort a alternative, um, to how they're managing their septage now. Uh. For a multitude of reasons, uh, but for one, it's, it's this facility, the last thing we wanna do is stress this facility anymore than we already have.
Yeah, I'm with you on that.
Yeah.
So I think, um, to be fair to resort, I think, uh, Tim is aware of some of this, not all of it. Uh, but I just wanted to get you guys thinking about it, so we'll, we'll put it on the agenda. For the eighth, they, the, the resort didn't say they needed a decision before that, correct?
They said they wanted to, need to give them some dates within the next few weeks, but obviously the sooner that we can give them an answer, the better, they need to come up with a different plan.
Now, is there ever an opportunity to bring it to another, like Plymouth?
Yeah.
To throw something out and, and help defer the costs and some, I have no idea what any of that entails.
Further cost, uh, so Plymouth, Ashland, uh, those are like the two biggest ones in this area that will take septage. Um, all the septic haulers typically go to one or the other, and it really becomes who's the cheapest price per gallon, and, and it's basically like. By half of a cent a gallon, sometimes it's like one cent a gallon, um, in, in upwards of that. Um, so those two certainly will take it, um, and they actually utilize it in their de-watering process, cause use that as a binder. It makes their sludge thicker, um, so. They, they, they certainly could arrange something to have them haul, haul it off the site, the, the issue is that we've never charged.
Right.
For them to, to get rid of it.
Which other towns do, do.
Correct.
Right.
They, I mean, in, in, for the sake of, because.
Commercials.
Right, I mean, it's something that you're treating outside of what you normally would, right?
Right.
Um, for that, there's that component, uh, as well as the trucking end for the resort, it's gonna be substantially more, because they're not just coming down the road, they're driving. You know, what is it, fifteen miles to Plymouth, something like that?
Yeah.
Um, if, that's the closest location that they could go to, um, so that, you know, there is, there certainly will be a financial impact on the resort. If, you know, if the board decides to, to not allow them to discharge it here, which I again recommend.
When, sorry, when was the last time that they did discharge?
Last September, they do it annually.
Annually, and about the same amount every year?
Yeah, so they, more or less what they do is they pump out their entire septic tank, uh, holding tank. Uh, and, and it takes a, a few days, cause it's just trip after trip after trip, trip that they use a smaller truck. Um, and, and they just do, they haul it down all day long, so, yeah, yeah.
We are under no legal obligation to accept their septage, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah, the only, the only obligation we have, uh, Dan, to your point, legally, is for residents. Um, in, in town, so they're, they're, they're actual primary residents, um, and, and. That doesn't necessarily mean we have to actually accept the septage, we have to be willing to. Give them a path to disposing of it, so if we can't get rid of it, for example, if we can't accept it. We, we can help facilitate them getting rid of it.
For a resident.
That's correct.
Right.
Uh, what I will tell you, uh, is, I believe there's maybe thirty-five houses in town that are on septic still. Um, and of those thirty-five, maybe one, maybe five in my entire. Uh, career here in Waterville have disposed of it in Waterville, and, and the reason for that is, most septic haulers don't want to come into town empty. To pump this out to get rid of it in Waterville, because we're not going to accept septage that's already on a truck, that we don't know what's in it, where it came from, so.
So they're not coming here empty.
Right.
So they're not. They collectively.
Exactly.
We'll allow them to dump our residents.
Exactly.
Up here.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's really what it is, it's more, it's more cost effective for a hauler to be, you know, having trips on the way in. Have this be their last trip and then dispose of it, uh, since this is more or less the furthest point. In this area from the facilities that they.
Once again, we're unique.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So why don't we, uh, uh. So why don't we, uh, uh, again, uh, in interest of fairness, in in the event that uh, the resort would like to attend a meeting to to discuss this, we'll put it on the agenda for next Wednesday's regular meeting, but that gives you something to chew on, to think about.
Yes.
Uh, for, for the meeting. I know, bad, bad, bad imagery on that one. Okay, that's it. Is there anything else anyone would like to talk about? Uh, otherwise, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I'm favor.
Hi.
Thank you, guys. I think you guys need to sign this. There's just the one document you wanna sign? Oh, is it two? I saw.
Thank you, Dylan.
Hey, was there another one?
Appreciate the answers.
Oh, no problem. Yeah.
Yeah, there's only one we sign, okay?
Thank you. So I saw three lines on each of them.
Right.
Terry will both of us sign today.
All right, I'm gonna give this to, to Dan, and speaking of the agenda, we're still on for one o'clock today, to go over the
Yeah.
The agenda for next, next week's meeting. Let us know when we're, we're off.